When I opened the Waukaa Select Board meeting of October 18th, 2023. We have adjustments to the agenda. I'm just going to bring up an email we got about municipal technical assistance. The legislature has approved a new pro- funded a new program for small towns. So talk about that under Select Board Review in Action. Approval of the minutes of October 4th, 2002. You have a motion to approve?
Like a motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have any discussion, omissions, corrections, deletions? Deb does such a good job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so Carrie. Comments from the community? Tammy Westover was going to come over. See her again. Maybe this is for... Hi Tammy.
Good evening.
Waiting for you. Tammy called me this evening and asked to speak to the board about her property. Yeah, yeah.
I need to send an application into the state of Vermont for a buyout of my house and property.
Okay. I could have helped you with that too. I've been helping other people on the street.
Okay.
Because of the dam, all the damage you received?
I've been flooded. Seventy-three, but I don't remember getting into the cellar then. Ninety-five. That did get into the cellar. And it was one step from going on to the first floor of the house. Ninety-seven. It flooded again, but I don't remember it going into the cellar. And I think the house was there in, in the flood of twenty-seven. And they, some compare the flood in July to the flood of twenty-seven.
Okay. So you're prob- are you in the flood zone?
I must be. I think so, but I'm not sure, Linda.
So there's different fundings. Did they, did you talk to anybody about it? There's different fundings on whether you're in the flood plain or not. I think the Vermont Emergency Management has some monies for those who are not. And then those that are in the flood plain need to go through FEMA. That's a different funding. But anyway, I'll, I'll look for the, look for it.
Okay. So as to when you hear?
Why did you decide to do that after you picked, fixed it up?
I'm sorry?
I wondered why you decided to do that after you fixed it up?
I've, I've been thinking about selling for a while and then the flood just was the was the deciding, the final.
Right. I thought you might have been here. I'll look for that for you with the state. I thought you might have been here today about the right-of-way.
I, Kate has called me and she asked for the I think it was a week or so ago for a copy of the quick claim deed. So I found I had it copied and then I mailed her a copy of it. And then she's what is his name? Hayden, the guy that works with her on that?
Yeah.
He called and left a message on the phone that he was going to be in Waukaa today.
Right. And he dropped it off.
And so I called Kate. And I, because she wanted to send me what, what you have there, email it to me and I told her I did not have email. That she'd have to mail it to me. And then she said that, that he would be in Waukaa today and she would have him leave it here. She wanted to-
Was this for Tammy?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. You alls. You happy with us? Are done with us? Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to the Cemetery Commissioner's Budget Hearing. I left it up here on everyone's desk. Want to give us a presentation on why it went up?
So this is our last year of our contract with Kirk Yar. Because we haven't been able to get together, we just reached out and to see if he would even be interested in a new contract. And he indicated that yes, but he wouldn't do it for the price and it would probably be about $2,001. So we are going to put it out to bid in the spring, but we need to put a budget in now.
Right.
So we need, we, we went with the figure that he gave us in anticipation of what it would be. And like, some people just aren't bidding on things now. It's very hard for us to get. So Cornelius did have a talk with them and this is what we found out. So we're just proposing, this is just for the moment. We're not asking for anything else. We do have in reserves that I figured out as the clerk, that we have about 5,000 and we're going, hoping to get some repairs done in Davenport and Fairmont. We did have some people who were going to bid on it, but one of them has gotten sick and so that hasn't happened.
Anything else?
Do you want to say anything? Okay, go ahead.
Not necessarily, but I don't know. Anyone's aware that Krista Pack is suffering from cancer? Third?
Yeah.
And she hasn't, you know, she hasn't started any treatments yet, but is in the process.
And she's in her thirties and she lives in our town.
Yeah, we're sorry to hear that.
And she's one of our cemetery commissioners. So that's it. We're just asking you guys to consider that for next year.
Great. Thank you. No word on the Recreation Committee? The Litter Committee? Did everyone get, yeah, everyone got a copy on their desk? So it looks the same as last year.
Right. Linda?
Yeah.
I got a question regarding the the budget for the Litter Committee. It's just a clarification. So I'm looking at last year's budget and this is the, basically a replica of last year's budget. And I'm also looking at the profit and loss through October 10th. And in that run, it's called an ordinance committee. And the numbers are all different. So I'm not sure which one is which here.
Well, I go by the one that we voted on.
If there's something wrong, I'll change it. Just send me a, a copy of it by email and I'll take care of it.
Will do.
So what, what do you want to be called?
Litter Committee.
Litter Committee, okay. So we will change that. It looks like things are just just put in a different way, but there's still the same things in the ordinance committee. We just need to change that name. That's all. The categories are still the same. They're just not in the same order.
Right. The numbers are different though. I believe, maybe they're not-
No, no, they aren't.
Okay.
No. If you look at the budget, they aren't.
While we're talking about the Litter Committee, I just want to bring up the fact that Halsey sold their bins, their clothing bins to apparel, something apparel. And they no longer will pay us to take the clothing. They just take it and they service us every Thursday. So I just wanted to bring that up as a clarification to the Select Board of what has changed. Because the Litter Ordinance or Litter Committee is the one that got the Halsey start. And we thought we were going to get money from it, but no more.
And they're aware of that?
Yes, as far as I know.
Are you asking, yes, we're aware of that. Yes. Yep.
I just wondered, the signage, do you do you actually spend $300 every year?
Yeah, pretty much. At least we have for the past three years.
So it looks like so far this year, you've only spent $676.32 for both days.
Yeah, that, okay. It doesn't sound correct to me, but we can go back over this with the invoices.
Okay. All right, we'll put this into considerations. All right, we're going to move on to engineering ideas, the mitigating flooding along Flatiron. We have Alex here today from the Planning Commission. And Doug from SLR and his guests. Jessica. So last week, I emailed you a copy of this and I gave her the copy last week, so. I have a small one. I don't know.
We should stay over here. This is the best spot. Thanks for having us.
Maybe, yeah. I don't know, I don't know. Whatever. The audience needs to see it too.
So, thanks for having us. Doug and I are who work on a lot of river-related projects, worked on a few here. Some bigger mitigation projects in the state, including with the LaMond County Regional Planning along LaMond. As part of that effort, the LaMond County Planning Commission had us create a hydraulic model so we can look at different conditions along the river. So we were able to kind of use that model to look at what has been going on from a river perspective around Flatiron Road and just right upstream of the, the trail bridge here, here in town. So that was kind of where we stepped off from. We did a same visit in July following the flooding. So you know, just right after the flooding occurred, we're, we're able to kind of observe kind of what you've gone through, which we're very sorry about. And, you know, started to brainstorm ideas about what things could be done really close to the village here. And especially right around where Flatiron Road washed out, just right up the way. Does everybody know the spot? Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure.
The water's exposed.
Yes. Thought so. So so I think Doug is going to mainly describe what's going on. We all have a copy in front of you, but we weren't sure if it would be helpful for us to point for some things. So we do have a big copy also. So probably starting on the Big Mac that you have, which is a copy of the same one I have here. So it's the full page one.
So this is a zoomed out view of our project area. Route 15 runs across the top and, and the rail trail and Flatiron Road across the bottom of the image. And LaMond, of course, comes under Route 15. Or it's old Route 15 where it used to cross and a subject of our, of our study, the remaining concrete and, and fill that is still in the river from, from the old crossing. And then comes along Flatiron Road before off the image going under the rail trail bridge into town here. So each of these yellow lines is a cross section from our modeling of the river. So it looks at the topography of the river and the, the flow coming down, connecting each cross section and looking at flood levels, velocities through, through the systems that we can look at problem areas and, and evaluate different alternatives. So the first thing that I would focus on is the old Route 15. So there, there's three spots that we looked at. Changing conditions in the area. The first, that, that old Route 15 bridge abutment and fill area that's circled and red here. And we have a cross section that previously been surveyed and put into the model that goes right through that area. So another, you know?
Right. Oh yeah. So this is, this is the Route 15 crossing and it's hard to see in the picture, but there's a whole lot of concrete walls that kind of push the water in this direction. I know all of you have gone on the roads around here, but unless you've kind of gotten really close and looked at some of them, you might not have seen kind of how much concrete is left in the river. And then also a lot of fill in, in this area too, which kind of squishes down. Last one's fine. There is water that was left. It's really, really common. You know, the river goes through there just like it did when the bridge was in place. You know, they took the top off the bridge. So it's I, I think there's no reason for them to have taken it out when, when they built the new bridge. I think now we have a better understanding of rivers and how they work. We saw something almost exactly like this in Jeffersonville, actually, right? Where the Brewster River comes in, where there was also a rail trail bridge there. So the old Route 15 abutments were left and squeezing the river in that case. And in that case, we, LaMond County Planning Commission helped the town take those out. And we've seen improvements in flooding with those abutments out. So it's, it's something we've seen. We did another project this summer in Starsborough. I think there's always excitement about a new project, but maybe sometimes old projects don't get cleaned up the way they should have. Situation is you've got a lot of bridge in the river still.
Yeah. So then the, the next thing that we looked at, and I'll just go through each of these areas and we'll look at the results and and think about moving forward. The Flatiron Road itself is situated in, especially where it was washed out, you know, you know, really vulnerable, vulnerable spot up on the steep bank. There's, there's armor that held up, but once the water got up onto the road, it just was able to gouge out the road material. And so what we looked at in the modeling is moving the road through that vulnerable area of the slope. And in our modeling, trying to understand, would that, you know, protect it from having that washout happening again? And then the third area is this large red red polygon on the right side of the river. This is along the old Route 15 road and connecting up towards the rail trail where old, old Route 15 crosses the rail trail. And it's our understanding that fish and wildlife manage that parcel and could be open to some floodplain restoration alternatives on that area that we're, so we were looking at different alternatives to use that as lowering, lowering for more accessible floodplain. A couple of different things that I'll talk about in our, in our results. So we modeled six different alternatives. The first two focused on that, those bridge abutments in the river. And these these are described in the, the other handout that I made. There's a table with the six alternatives described there. And then on the, on the other side of that page are the results. And so we looked at a couple scenarios for removing material from the old bridge abutment area. The first, just removing the concrete abutments themselves. We would go in and lower those down to, to grade and just remove those from the river. And then the second, moving the concrete abutments and then further going in and digging out any of the fill that was placed along with the bridge. It would, it would require additional investigation because there is bedrock in the area that at this point in time we aren't considering removing, but there is a lot of stone fill and other concrete material and debris that could be removed. And it's really, you know, it's, it's in the main flow path of the river. And just removing as much of that material as possible could provide additional flow rate during, during flooding and prevent the large floods from getting directed right at Flatiron Road in that spot. And so in the tables, we have the 500-year water surface elevation modeled in Table 2 and then the 500-year velocity in Table 3. And so this is looking at the cross section shown on the sheet, starting at 10.484, which is which is just downstream of the Route 15 Bridge. And then extending down to 1.428, which is downstream of the rec fields and downstream of the, the floodplain restoration area that we were looking at. And so what we see by removing the bridge abutments and some of the associated fill is that we, the model shows the 500-year flood water surface dropping about half a foot through that area where it was getting onto the road. And so it would, it would take that much more flow coming down the river to get onto the road initially in order, and prevent help prevent the scouring from happening again in the same, in the same sense. And then the, the next alternative, alternative 3, is where we looked at raising the road up the valley slope. You can see the, the red, the red shape that shows, you know, the potential layout that, that would look like, just shifting it over to, to raise the, the road itself. And this alternative, when you look at the results, you don't see much change because there's, there's not a big change in, in fill to, to move the, the road up the valley slope. But what we, what we did find is that you could raise it enough such that the 500-year flood similar to the flood that we saw in July, wouldn't get onto the surface of the road. And so if you armored the slope as the, the riverbank is currently armored, you could mitigate, you know, potential erosion from a similar sized flood in the future.
Yeah. So it doesn't do much for flooding upstream, but it does protect the road itself by moving it up with armor and getting a little bit further from the river. You know, it would mean like going outside of your current right-of-way because your right-of-way is relatively narrow there. So kind of working with the adjacent landowner, scoot it up the hill some in, in what's currently trees. To get that extra space.
What about the ledge?
There may be some, some ledge on the road associated with that.
And the water for the school is on that bend?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So kind of reconfiguring that, you know, it might actually be able to go like above where the water is potentially. You know, I think that basically what this is saying is this is the elevation you'd need to get up to, to be above where the water is likely to get. And, and what does that mean? So you know, you're right. There's the water, there's some property line issues, but you know, it is something to consider. So we felt like we wanted to at least give you that information.
My question about that one? They show a place where you would, on the other side where it could flood.
Yeah.
Then it would take the water instead of going through the road. Um. How much would it flood? And what would you have to do to make it flood? I mean, in other words, how far do you have to dig down?
That is a great question. It's a great number to go with.
Yes.
No, not the top here.
Just like
And so maybe the road where it is can just do that and it would be okay? Instead of moving the road?
Sure. So, so our alternatives four and five here, which are on, on the sheet there, look at removing the, the old Route 15 itself, as it goes through there, is still elevated and has a lot of fill through, through that area. So alternative four looks at just lowering that grade to, to match the rest of the floodplain. And we do from that, we see some reduction in flood deaths across, across the river in those, in that location. And then alternative five looks at lowering the whole floodplain, the whole red shade.
Okay.
From, it, it ranges from about three to six feet of lowering of the floodplain. So it is, it is a significant excavation. But it would, it would lower that area instead of in the, you know, now it takes almost a hundred-year flood for the water to start getting up onto that floodplain. And it lowers it to about the 10 to 25-year flood to start getting up on that floodplain. And in addition to lowering the, the water surface through this area, it also allow, would allow debris coming down the river to, to settle out on the floodplain instead of continuing downstream, potentially clogging in the rail trail bridge again or other locations. Instead of continuing downstream, potentially clogging in the rail trail bridge again or other locations in the river.
Or our school street.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah, and you know, it takes some water off of the red fields, like it wouldn't. I don't think it would prevent the red fields from flooding, but it means that as water is coming down. It would also be able to be on the other side of the river where it currently doesn't get up to, it's going to be really big.
So be sure that I understand the difference between four and five, we're just talking about four is just lowering the roadbed. Five is doing a substantial excavation, I'm looking at another thing uh. I can't, the ballpark estimate, you guys have got units in here, I believe the fifteen bridge abutment was pulling about eleven hundred yards. And the removing all of that was around eleven thousand yards, twelve thousand yards. Okay.
For flood restoration.
And these values here are what we can see in elevation differences of water. Make sure that I see, so it's station ten forty four where we're about the same, given either. Uh, given either choice.
And then the other, the other thing to to look at there is the the velocities themselves. And you see a substantial decrease in those velocities through the floodplain restoration area. And that again is when the water is able to get up and spread across the floodplain um. Slowing down, storing water. Mitigating the peak coming through town um. And as well, I mean, possibly settling out debris coming through.
Yeah, so that's what we've seen as one of the biggest benefits of these, it's not always just about bringing the flood levels down. It's also about giving the river a spot to put all of the logs, or at least a lot of logs and ice chunks, so. Um, you know, so anything that could get settled out uh floodplain upstream is is one less thing that's coming through your bridges. So when you see like the reduction in velocities there. That's a big indicator that you you have some things being able to kind of settle out better than you would now prior to last phase.
I don't know if a maintenance plan for for keeping that kind of stuff cleared out, I mean, we still have an access road down in there to get. Everything we needed to get out of there after a flood event.
Yeah, so you would continue to have the access road down that currently crosses the rail trail, so you know, you'd have this current access down to the rail trail. And with a lot of these floodplains, we continued up some kind of access down. A lot of times it's a chain across it, so you don't have people driving, driving in, but. You know, having access would be um part of it, so you know, you could get down there, remember those debris and tracks or whatever might get accumulated there.
Right, where are you talking about fishing wildlife?
Yeah. If they end up digging that twelve thousand yards out.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that we can get in there and clean out all the garbage that gets left there. Because they're talking about a velocity slow of almost, what is that, three feet per second, right here where the old abutments are. And that's the most substantial change.
It comes down here and sterilizes the same. Um, you know, so I think one of the complicating factors here, you know, as we start to look a little closer about feasibility is there is, there is a house. At the end of that road, um it's currently not occupied from what I can tell because the road's kind of broken up, but. Um, you know, there is a property that would need to be like considered uh with this.
I'm working with him for a buyout.
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure whether he'll be accepted, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then and it's, you know, if the property were to stay and need access, there could still be, you know, the road could be relocated. Towards the back of the floodplain, uh still lowered um. There still could be options, including access to them.
It's great, you know, I mean, one of the things that we didn't really point out as much, if you pull to this like kind of blue and red uh. Colored picture that you have there.
Yeah.
So the colors are um. Elevations, so and the contours are elevations, you could kind of see that this area is high. This is, it's the old um Route fifteenth roadbed. And it kind of juts out into the river and it's much higher, I mean, if someone was just trying to access with a driveway, a driveway could be kind of further back along. Um, you know, the rail and and you know, kind of tucked back in, it doesn't need to be like a huge highway embankment. It's out there now, if it is, you know, um, you know, recreational exercise or access to one home. Um, so you know, I think a lot of that fill could still get dug out, you know, even if. You know, by a ton go forward, there could be some alternative.
Is that land or is that riverbank? I mean, I'm I'm just thinking about. The fish and wildlife would be happy with.
So, you know, all of this part that's filled is um is road fill and. Asphalt and gravel, I mean, that's not good habitat. Um, and then the area that's in front of on the riverside of of that road fill is. Like a field, we were up there, we said they'd have to cut down like three trees. It's, there's there's very little quality habitat associated with that area. Um, it might have a fish and wildlife access. Um, value, which would still be there even if it was in a lower elevation, but we've um. Been working on floodplain restoration projects, including lowering of land with fish and wildlife. Um, at many different parcels and one of their big concerns is usually about. Cutting of trees, so if it was an area and did have a lot of very nice trees kind of overhitting the river. I think they might have some big questions about it, but. You know, looking at the current state of the property, um, you know, I think they'd be at least open to the discussion. One of the things that Seth brought up, Seth Jensen from. LaMoyale County Planning Commission, we were talking about this, or you know, we were talking about this, is that uh. The floodplain lowering option that we have on there um. If you did in increase your flood capacity through. The rail trail bridge with a bypass culvert, like a big culvert on the side. This lowered floodplain would go kind of right up to a culvert or something, like if you were, if there was a change in the bridge configuration. Um, Seth was saying that there was some discussion about um. You know, maybe taking a look at that bridge and seeing if there was an opportunity for a. Culvert next to the bridge opening.
Well, there is a culvert there, you mean that we're.
Really big one.
Well, we're waiting for the state hydrologist to come and upsize it. So you're you're gonna, you're kind of recommending a larger one than.
So.
It's real small there.
Yeah, so we at this point have not looked at the bridge or changes of the bridge, that wasn't part of what. Alex and Seth, they can ask us to look at here, was more specific to the Flatiron Road area. But I think um having identified that some floodplain. Um, mitigation work here could could be an alternative. Um, if you, if there was a change at the bridge, this could match into that really well. In the case that maybe both things would happen. But this, I I guess just to be clear, this, these alternatives, um. Assuming the bridge is the same as the bridge has been before.
Rail trail route.
Yeah, as though it just got away, it was.
The other thing I would say is we do, alternative six is looking at combining all all three of these components. Where you do see the most benefit, um, so it certainly all three together. Would would go to the purpose to protecting Flatiron Road, protecting downstream infrastructure. Um, but at the same time, each each of the three components really have a lot of. Value in in each of themselves, so. We hope to to continue each of them forward, whether together or at different times um. We check.
So what is the next step? This whole project.
Do you have a?
Um, so I think Seth sent me to just collect questions, I don't know if you guys have.
So, yeah, so next step, so there's a couple of different things, um, I think that Seth is happy and and LCPC is happy to. And help move this forward, you know, if you feel like. One or all three of these components seem reasonable to to move forward with. I think under um one of the the same was if we did the floodplain restoration piece. Is to, you know, figure out what may or may not happen with um the property on that side of the road. Um, I think the LCPC would probably start having some conversations with landowners, including fish and wildlife, to see. How amenable they would be to, you know, some of these projects. Um, and then, you know, probably apply for some grant funding, and there's a couple of different. Um, types of grants um could be appropriate here. Uh, whether some flood mitigation ones either through FEMA or the Resilient Community Fund. Um, or the floodplain restoration part um has a really big water quality benefit, so some of the water quality funding that's available. Uh, might be appropriate for, you know, a design things first. But I think any of any of the alternatives would need to have kind of a feasibility slash design phase. First, when, you know, we can figure out exactly what it would look like, what's the volume, I mean, I think. The the volume is based on a ten percent design, you know, we we don't have surveys, it's based on Midar. Um, you know, there could be other constraints um that haven't been done yet, so. So I think the next step would be maybe giving feedback to Alex about. Um, you know, if it's appropriate for them to start having some of those conversations and maybe thinking about what kind of grant funding would be available.
Thank you. How is the board feeling about um this presentation?
Definitely, number one should be done. This widen of river out.
They're gonna be down in there, they may as well take the three feet out of the the riverbed as well.
Serial too, yeah, yeah. So you're, you're saying option two would be.
Minimum.
Minimum.
And my my leaning is I kind of like the idea of of lowering the floodplain. I don't know about getting into the roadbed that accesses that property and and the fish and wildlife access, but if we could take the material. From the riverside of the existing, the old fifteen roadbed. Give us a place to store a little stuff, give us a place for debris to settle out. And maybe tie it into. Potential culvert at the at the bridge like you guys were talking about. But that that, I think minimizes. Having to deal with buyouts in that house that's down there, because now if we're talking about that, we're talking about demoing a house. And then what do we have for access down there, and once that's all widened out, I mean, I could see that being another valuable fishing spot. You know, something that.
Mm-hmm.
We have over by River View, but we don't have, we don't have another access point here.
So the town, if 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 they agree to do the buyout, um the town will own that land.
And what happens with the house that's on it?
It's demolished.
I see.
And we own the land, uh we can never build on it, we can never sell it. We can never ask for FEMA. Uh, damage on it.
Mm-hmm.
It's just ours.
But we could do like what we have, I think that's on the Walker's side of uh by.
Across your. Across your guts.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what those two, that property is.
Yeah, I was thinking more about the the fishing access right across from the old chicken barn. Um, I don't know if that's technically.
That's in Morse code.
That's Morse code, well, either way, I mean, it's just a parking lot with a a sign and a place to walk down to the river.
Yeah, that or that and no trail people being bicycle facilities, maybe.
Yeah. Put a couple of plastic picnic tables down there. But either way, my my leaning is leave as much of that road as we can. I don't know what that does to flows and designs and things, but.
We should al- also consider number three. Find out what kind of a. Nightmare that's gonna be. Logistics.
I think it's gonna be rather expensive, a lot of ledge to remove. Plus the old fill pipes. Because the tanks no good anymore, it don't matter. To the school.
There's nothing down there close, is there, other than Jim's a fire stuff?
Just that in button with the two fill pipes, that's.
Fires.
That's. That's not even.
That can be moved somewhere else.
Be removed.
What about the blasting with the Earthly's house?
No, they would drill and crack it, they wouldn't blast.
Okay.
That or an excavator with some picker on it.
Uh, it's.
Too hard.
Not do it.
Little ledge there, isn't it?
What they do is drill and then they put. Uh. Shives and wedge, and it just drives down and pops it. Just like they take the granite out of the granite quarry.
So Alex, um, if we come up with um some projects or all of them, I mean. Is the planning commission funding the next step? Is it us?
I think we'd be pursuing, you know, uh, funding for the design and engineering and. Kind of pre-planning process. You mentioned there's various funding sources that.
Right.
Whether it's the water quality or HMGP.
Hi, could I ask a couple of questions?
Hmm, yeah.
And this is Monica, um, this is, this is for the LaMoyale County Planning Commission, actually, I'm just wanting to make sure that. Um, the LaMoyale County Planning Commission is considering um any. Um, action that might be taking upstream, be taken upstream, like um in Hardwick. For flood, future flood mitigation and how that might play into this. And also thinking about um the culvert that's being discussed. Um. Basically seeing um how the. Last restoration of the culvert on Townhill Road played out for. The idea of making sure that anything that's being considered. Um, for a culver also takes into consideration what's happening in. Above upstream and. Potential bigger floods that could happen in the future.
You know, Seth has mentioned the the upstream projects in Hyde Park, I don't know, did you guys have any specific conversations with them? I don't know if those have been really thought out uh. Or pursued at this point, but I know it's been discussed, um so yes, we will certainly keep that in mind as the town. Forward.
You know, I think.
Thank you.
Monica, another piece of that is that um. You know, it's a big reason why LCPC wanted to have one model of the entire. LaMoyale River, um, you know, as well as some of the tributaries to come in, so that. You know, when looking at some of these alternatives, you're kind of seeing how it might affect upstream and downstream, that's all kind of together.
Thank you.
So you've done that, or you're going to do that, or you're taking that into consideration, or?
The upstream projects.
Yeah.
It it's certainly something that Seth has on his radar, I know it's been discussed.
Okay, let's um wrap it up and let them know which way to move forward. I mean, I I think it's um. Beneficial, it keeps flooding and flooding there, we keep spending money. A lot of damage, especially this top. Blood, um, that something needs to be done. Blood, um, that something needs to be done. Do you wanna look at all of them and uh maybe uh? Do you like, do you do a preliminary or anything, or? Or just go at it if we pick one, that's what I'm trying to get out of you, because you know, maybe. One of your ideas, fishing game might not really like it and, you know, that's off the table, or. Do you do preliminary investigation into some of this stuff and then?
Yeah, that's.
And come back.
Track that LCPC has done, pursue funding from kind of feasibility and uh concept design. Phase where um partners like you and maybe landowners can look at maybe some different alternatives. Um, you know, I might brought up some great points and how you get out to, you know, if you do a buyout, how you get out there, you know, look at. Um, you know, different alternatives, like leave the road high, move the road back. Move the road because people can walk out there, so I think that there's, um, it is an approach that they use, so. You know, I I feel like if you would say you're comfortable with moving forward with a concept design phase. With all of them, it seems like a pretty appropriate um. Authorization.
What are you doing, feasible, please study on one and then two and then three or altogether?
I think that's up to you. I think that the road part feels maybe potentially different than the others. And and Seth and Alex might come up with different funding sources, maybe there's a funding source that would. Um, you know, pay for the river part and the flood plain part, but not pay for the road parts now. I'm not sure what they might come from, so it might depend on the funding source and it might. Or not. But I don't think you would have to say we are definitely doing all three. Um, now, because if you would get through a concept design phase, it's just really not feasible. Um, you know, we've had some projects that ended with, it wasn't feasible um after that phase.
Right now, we have an engineer designing the replacement of that road. For FEMA, um, one of the things we did ask him was to. Design moving it a little, um, I'm not sure FEMA would go for that or not, but um. That's what we asked for, so that's kind of in the works already.
My gut feeling is if we were to have two and five done. At least you would change the flow and gain volume. Of water displaced.
I have to believe these, these aren't cumulative, we can't just add the values from column two to the values of column five.
Yeah.
No, but it is, the column six is modeling. Essentially, two and five. As long as we're moving the the road up elevation.
Right, three doesn't really change anything as far as flows are concerned, okay.
Oh, it doesn't.
You just, you just see the largest decreases in water acceleration. And the largest decreases in flood velocity.
I mean, at least that way you you would still leave the road there, so if that place doesn't get bought out. You still have access to remove material or debris later on and see what happens. Cause it may not, hopefully the next five hundred years bother the flat iron road. Until we can see what our FEMA engineers come up with.
So do you want to go with one, two, four and five?
I was just gonna leave four out, just two and two and five.
Why not just put it in? I mean, it's not costing us any money at the moment.
Right.
Doesn't it kind of go with um? Four and five go together?
Yeah, there was a substantial change in the yardage, I don't.
Yeah.
Did you five, so four is more in just the road bed.
Right.
Five is more in a whole area road bed.
Right.
Were you saying to leave out three, the the flat iron road?
Just leave it out, the the movement of the road.
So maybe go with, yeah, two and five. It's the most sense from. And, you know, I think that.
Oh, yeah, two, two, yeah.
Well packaged, um, in grant applications, they're very similar between river and flood plain work. And I mean, you do have someone who's already working with. Flatiron Road and every construction and thinking about if they can scoot it up the hill, I mean, it feels like maybe you're already. Doing that one. And, you know, maybe we could just. Think of the elevations that. We think might be appropriate to get above the five hundred year flood there that they could. Try to shoot for. That's like a good approach.
Yeah.
Now, I have just one question, if you go beyond the new bridge on fifteen. You'll see there's like two or three small embutments in the river from a previous railroad crossing.
So upstream brother.
Yeah, up just past where the Route fifteen bridge is. If you go into the river, you'll see there's three old embutments in there, where there used to be a railroad. Crossing to get to a lumberyard. Where Tenny's property is. Would that help taking those out, or? Or is it better to leave them there to get some disturbance so there's less ice?
Yeah, you know, it's actually a good question, um, you know, we did look at those and I doubt they're. Um, affecting flat iron road.
Right.
But they could be collected by a certain degree of their potentially, you know, I mean, we could certainly look at them.
I mean, you're in there already and you've got to get the permits from fishing game and. Water.
Um, it feels like not a huge extra, so like, you know, just look at those also as part of a, right? You know, cause you're right, a lot of the analysis is like putting in the river and getting the river cross section and change. Well, you know, we're already out there walking around the river anyway, it's not the ultimate solution.
Okay, so we're going to uh recommend number two and five. Everyone in agreement with that, happy with that? For LCPC to continue looking, doing feasibility on? You know, happy, Richard? You're not happy?
I'd like to see them raise the road too, but I don't know whether.
Well, we are working with, uh, we did hire that engineer, New England Consulting, who is this. Redesign, that's part of his contract to redesign that road to replace it. Um, and one of the things we did ask for was a recommendation on moving it. When we met with him, so it's like already doing it, the same thing.
All right.
And um. They have um volunteered to supply him with some information on. How high the road should be up to stay out of the flood, is what I'm hearing. Okay. Alright. Right, Alex? Thank you very much, it was interesting.
Thank you.
For your work. Are we having some uh people visiting us?
Well.
Yeah. Um, project managers report.
Okay, um, so uh my focus in the past two weeks has been almost exclusively on. Uh FEMA and VLCT insurance. Um, we're getting to a stage now where uh we are starting to do enough. Um, uh, reporting on line items that we're getting uh good feedback, starting with VLCT. Um, we have submitted uh a whole variety of. Uh, line items that were uh in the garage, uh damaged by uh the flood. And we're getting prices on those, and I'd say we're about eighty percent there. Um, couple of things to point out, one is that the town, um. Town hall is uh in the flood zone, so that is considered a separate uh claim. There's a five million dollar statewide cap on that, we don't know what the allocation will be. Uh, currently, we are looking at um about forty-five thousand. In claims for town hall. Um, the fire department and the garage, uh, according to the underwriters, is considered one building. And that building has a approximately a million dollar cap on the the building itself. Um, and but the key is what we are reporting on primarily is contents. So it's the contents of that building in which there's a cap of seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, so that would be a combination of both the fire department and uh the garage with a cap of. Seventy-five thousand, uh, currently garage only, we're eighty-one thousand. Um, and that will grow to probably a hundred thousand. Um, so uh we've got to be aware that there is a cap on that and um in working with FEMA. If this is denied or a portion of it is denied, um, the excess is reported already. Into the FEMA portal, so they're ready to pick it up. Uh, once we get a definitive answer from VLCT. Um, there's also a one million dollar cap on data processing equipment that really does not apply to us in this case. And there's a five thousand dollar cap on road salt, which is, which is very good because uh. Uh, we did have quite a bit of that salt damaged and it looks like it can be replaced. Um, we did get uh the adjusters report, it's uh about a hundred and sixty pages, I think. Um, and uh that report is now gone to VLCT, to our representative. And they're grouping um items in together. Um, and within a couple of weeks, they'll be able to tell us approximately uh what our claim. Uh, what part, portion of the claim can be satisfied and what's going to be denied. Um, on the FEMA side of things, uh, that is actually moving along. Uh, pretty well at the this point, uh, so FEMA has taken all of our line items. And they have grouped them together into what they call five um projects. Uh, this is to our advantage since some of the. Um, line items fell below the minimum. By uh merging them together like this, uh, it puts everything up above the minimum. So we don't have that um automatic decline, uh, so that's very positive. The next step with uh FEMA is to um take these projects. And we start to assign um invoices to it, with uh payroll stubs. Um, all of the detail, photographs, everything. Um, and the objective for uh the next meeting with FEMA is to try to knock three of the five out. Uh, meaning we can call them complete, um, and that meeting is for Tuesday of next week. Um, so, you know, kind of happy to report that that this is all moving forward. Um, the VLCT line listing wa- has been incorporated into FEMA. Um, so we don't miss the cutoff date with FEMA. So what we're doing is taking all of our claims all the way across the board and we're putting it all into the FEMA portal. Um, and uh, you know, the argument is that we, that could uh potentially give us a hundred percent. Uh, coverage on uh uh the contents, the trucks and so forth. Uh, for the garage and for the fire department. The town hall is uh, uh, we do know what the numbers are, I did. Re- I just did put in the um, the heater, the water heater for town hall. Um, and that's included in that. Um, forty-five thousand dollar uh guesstimate. Um, on other fronts, uh, since everything has been FEMA insurance related for, seems like forever. Um, we are going to start up the website design, starting November first and start to get that uh back into action. Um, and start to pick up on some of the many other projects that uh fell by the wayside, so. Uh, you you start, I'm starting to see the end of the tunnel, the what is it, the light at the end of the tunnel, that's what it is. So that's what I got.
The seventy-five thousand cap on contents, that is for the entire building, both fire and highway?
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
And has anybody reached out to Jim to get an estimate on what he needs? I know he was here at the last.
So it it can't be both of them because they're two separate policies. The contents are owned by the fire department, not the town.
Okay, that may be correct, um.
So I've been working with Jim. Excuse me, our last meeting, I was tasked with setting him up on the portal with FEMA, which took me a week. But he's set up, but the deadline for the damage is Monday. But we've been waiting for, and he just told me later today that FEMA has finally reached out to him, so. This weekend, I'm gonna have to get his stuff together. Um, I would, he still hasn't gotten me all the figures, I would say about a hundred twenty-five to a hundred fifty thousand. Is what um they lost. Mostly that big air thing. Like that he fills us.
The air compressor for air packs.
Yeah. That's the big ticket item.
He was thinking anywhere from seventy-five to eighty thousand just to replace.
Seventy-six is what he could bid for.
Yeah, so uh thank you for the correction, uh, it probab- yes, it probably is too separate, the building is the same. So the million dollars in the building would would not, would remain the same, um, right. All in all, it looks like uh we're getting pretty close to two million in overall, uh, in overall claims.
I just got something to do about the pole bar too. Did we put in for that?
I can't hear, um.
So what about pole bar?
Yeah, the barn is also, um, there's just a generator in there, um. And but the barn is included, it is listed separately with VLCT, um, it is not in the flood zone. Um, and I would suspect that the the that barn and the garage. Uh. May fall under the seventy-five thousand dollar content limit, but I'll double check on that. By the way, we put in the recreation field and we put in, um, as much as I have so far of the detail of the rec field. Uh, that's an automatic. That's an automatic denial from VLCT. But it's important to have it posted with FEMA and so it has been posted with FEMA.
So the generator that was in the bus barn belongs to the fire department, so we're going to be including that on our damage reports. I don't know what else was in there. I don't know if anybody's looked at the snow blower yet.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we looked at the snow blower, it was purchased too several years ago for $350. So and we don't know when it last got created, so we're not making a claim on that.
Has anyone checked for how it's going to work this winter? Did Bob go check on it? If not, we need to put it on its list to maintain it. Something. I'll press them. Other questions?
Does the insurance company need, they must need prices from us or from contractors to repair that, the million, submit towards our million dollar claim? Garage, correct? We're going to have to get prices together for them.
Right.
And we're going to pay us for that.
Were you talking about the contents?
Nope, just the structural repairs.
Okay, so structural repairs on the garage and the fire department are both going to fail VLCT requirements because of the mold relationship. So those will also go into FEMA. And yeah, we collect all the invoices for all the services that have done work there. And you know, also all of the content, I'd say 90% of the contact is content has been priced out so far.
Hey, thank you very much, Kurt, a lot of work.
Yep.
Select, board review and action, election of a vice chair. I have talked to Michael, he's willing to do it if no one else. We had quite a back and forth last week.
I'll second the you're making a motion, I'll second.
Sure. Any further discussion or nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, so carry.
Thank you.
Yep. Treasure, the flood loan.
Okay, so your chair, Linda asked me to contact SBA about the up to $2 million loans that they are offering. So I went down to Water. I had a very interesting conversation with a man from Georgia. So he gave me a list of the things we have to do. We're a charter, so I'm from the state of Vermont, I have to get the charter and everything. You guys have to sign a piece of paper which I've supplied to Linda saying that you are giving approval for us to apply for this. I have to give three years of audit and a current balance sheet operating statement. List of all your names and your addresses and your phone numbers. Also, I just have to show our insurance policy and everything, providing coverage at the date, at the date of the disaster, along with all policy numbers and all that. And specifics of all disaster related grants and/or funds received from FEMA. If they've been received from FEMA, we have to let them know, but as far as I know, we have not received anything.
Not in this, not, not in this flood.
Not in this one, okay. So that is if we apply and for a 1.5 million, there are some interesting things about it. Number one, we would basically FEMA, we would never see the FEMA money, FEMA would pay back the SBA because they're pretty much a division of them, of FEMA. The other thing is, is they will only give us what, so if we ask for 1.5 and we don't have it, you know what I'm saying, the 1.5? Then they will only give us what FEMA is going to give us. So anything that we have to do that's not FEMA related, we can't put in this loan. So like your insurance stuff, no. I don't know about federal aid highway, that's the only thing I'm questioning.
No, no, that's separate to hold.
Okay, so those are the things that would be separate. I did just to reach out to our bank, Union Bank, who we have used currently usually for our cash management, which is like a line of credit. About $1 million, you annually turn it over, they would wait for us, we just pay the interest until we got the money from FEMA and we could pay it off. That one is 4.756. This FEMA one is 2.375. That's the lowest they would give us, but this is the one thing that the man stressed to me, George, the man from Georgia stressed that it could be higher based on our rating for that SAM registration. But I think we'll be fine because we've gotten grants and everything before. It's like we used to use, we used to have the DUNES number. Now it's this SAM registration through the state, through the feds. I just need permission to, from the board to apply for this loan. Because at the moment, what is happening is the bills are being paid by our cash management.
Well, that's what I'd like to know, that's what we want to know is where are we standing financially?
Well, we've spent over $164,000, we didn't, before these last bills that we didn't anticipate paying. That is considered flood and federal highway. I just paid out another 56,000 for Minosh.
Yeah, that's federal aid highway.
Yeah, so that's a whole different, but I still got to pay.
57,000.
Yep. And I still, I just paid another $14,000 out for Third Crow for the finish over there. Which might, we might get back through insurance, but I don't know. So right now, I've dipped into the capital funds, just it's called an inner fund exchange. In other words, it took, we won't get as much interest on our capital funds, but we need the money and it's sitting there. So I took out 100,000. But we are running low, but I do have taxes around the corner. I don't think we're going to run out of money, I just think that we need to be prepared when all these projects are going to be done, which is going to be in the spring, I assume. I don't think there's any plans to fix Flatiron Road till the spring or anything like that, or Town Hill, I'm not sure. But when these things, we put these out the bid, we're going to have to have the money. Linda came up with, and Kurt, I'm not sure about now, but before we were at 1.5 million.
And I said to.
Up to 2 million.
That's what his.
Yeah, so I can up it to 2 million of the SBA loans, I would have to go down next Monday, sit there, do all the paperwork and have everything with the, they said it's easier for me to go down there and do it all. They don't know, they call us a nonprofit because we don't really fit into any category. So that's what I would do. But I need permission to either take the loan from the Union Bank or go to the SBA and see what we can get.
Their deadline, SBA is how long?
And it's tied to what FEMA awards us, the loan amount is tied to what they award us, so we can never and what happens on the circumstances that we, I guess we would just be denied.
Right. The other thing is, is we are going to pay interest for this, FEMA is not going to pay that, so we are going to pay that.
Yeah, but how long can we be waiting for FEMA to?
Well, that's the thing, the SBA loan is up to seven years. So we can, they're not going to make us pay anything, but the interest will be accumulating.
You'd probably get the, you'd probably get the quick projects that are done pretty quickly. We still have not gotten the money, all the money from Burke Road thing done. The flood was in 2019, when do we finish it? 2022? We still haven't got all that money yet.
We're still waiting to that.
It takes quite a while. And the SBA projects take, takes a lot of time, they have to review them.
I talked to a FEMA person after I talked to the SBA man and he pretty much said he'd probably look in three or four years. I mean, the first part, but for the big projects like the Burke Road was and stuff, and if it's Flatiron Road or whatever it is, Town Hill, this is, it's a long time.
Well, two and three quarters is better than, what was it, four and a half or whatever the number was?
1.75, yes. But we actually don't control the money. In other words, how do I say this?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, so my, so the options I see is SBA, a cheaper interest rate. And most of it hopefully will be paid from FEMA, you know, it's new territory. Then this, and you have to do it soon, then there's the Union Bank, much higher rate. We really wouldn't need to borrow money until we need it. I mean, if, if, if the board decides to go Union Bank, I wouldn't take out a loan until sometime in the spring when we're starting those projects, because it kind of sounds like we are doing okay.
We are, I mean, we can use our, I have, in capital funds, I have about 250,000 left. So if we're not going to do a lot of projects, we're okay. Just I'm letting the board know that we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul at the moment because you could look at FEMA and some of our capital projects because we have to fix them, you know, at this point. But we will pay it back when we get.
Now, I read a note from the insurance that said they were willing to give us 50,000 now because we had so much damage.
Correct, they are, they are, VLCT has made an offer to front, basically front the town $50,000 against the claim.
Which I think we should take.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it will help our cash flow. Because come spring, he's going to want a new backstop and diamonds for his ball field and we'll need to pay off the rest of the furnace and.
I mean, our cash flow right now is fine because we're going to have taxes in months there. And so we're going to be fine through the winter.
But then, yeah.
My worry is come, let's say, February, March, that's when, you know, I'm not going to get taxes again until next, so.
A lot of your projects won't start until the end of April.
Well, that's what I'm saying, after we put it out to bid, that's when we really need to think about borrowing and where we're going to. But if I go into the SBA now, that loan starts now, you're paying the 2 point something on that 1.0 million, 1.5 million.
Or two.
Or two.
Essentially, we're going to sit on it, on the interest, the cost of the interest, $2 million until mid-May.
So that's what I'm worried about is with the SBA, before now we get approved, boom, we're paying the interest. Not, not when you draw, but when you get the loan. Whereas Union Bank, if we said we'll go to Union Bank in the spring, if we get it then, we will be paying more interest, but we wouldn't have paid it through the winter. So I don't know.
Well, I mean, the, the rest of that equation comes down to how long do we sit on our hands and wait for FEMA to reimburse us?
That's true.
And we can do the math, but if it's going to be four or five years before we get paid back, then they think the equation from the lower interest rate.
Or it's what the government's going to do.
You know, I could always just try with the SBA and then you guys make the decision to approve it or not. This is just a fine.
So do we need to borrow so much money? Can we just borrow some money, not the whole amount of money that we need?
Yeah, you can. I mean, he said you can borrow up to 2 million. Could be, but it's whatever we have that we potentially will get in a FEMA money.
So on the application, can we borrow, can we apply for the 2 million and when, if the board were to choose to accept that loan, we could then come up with a sum and attempt to borrow less, they would never deny us for less.
Right, I can ask the man, I've got his phone number and everything.
So when you go to apply, we have to have a figure? Is money getting added?
You have to give them that project list, so that's what I'm going to have to show him. I'm going to show him, we haven't received any FEMA money yet, but this is what we're anticipating and this is what we've spent. But I can only show what, you know, the roads and everything, can't do any of the buildings or.
Why?
I don't know, this is what it said.
Well, then it's not 2 million, it would only be, yeah.
Might even be half of that. Or less.
Well, it does say machinery and equipment.
What about?
A business physical disaster loan.
What about the building, like furnaces and?
Yeah, it does cover it. Okay, I'll try. Yeah, this is everything he gave me about how we are to fly and everything. We don't have bylaws, so I just have to have the charter. And we're considered a nonprofit, so it's 2.375. All right, I just need permission to go down Monday.
I haven't decided.
Okay.
My mind, Kurt. Kurt, what do you think is the amount that for cash flow that we would need?
1.5 million.
That's scary.
Huh?
Scary.
Scary.
I asked Union Bank for a million, I thought that was scary. One of the things Tina Norton told me is they, they have been giving a lot of loans to different towns and that is the rate they've been giving the other towns, 4.75. And like Johnson, the only thing she said was try to only apply once, whereas some of them have come back and asked for more because they had more range than what they thought. So if the million wouldn't work, we could always up it to 1.5 before we sign any paperwork. If we decide to go with you, that's all I'm saying.
And one comment that I heard from Jim Holton, I don't know if it's correct or not, but he thought that there had to be personal guarantors on this loan from SBC.
I read somewhere where you had to have $25,000 collateral or something, had to.
Collateral required for physical loss loans over 25,000 and all EIDL loans over 25,000. But for this disaster thing, no. That is for a home disaster loan and economic injury disaster loans.
So this loan, the one we're talking about, the 2 million, a half million and a half we're talking about is not an EIDL?
No.
So their collateral is our FEMA payments. You know.
Yeah, I don't care if FEMA is here.
So FEMA is what you're.
Need them.
No, I know what I'm saying, I don't, we don't need their dollars, it goes straight to them.
We already knew that we had, we, we had damage and that they had been.
All right, how is, what does the board want to do?
Personally, I think let's shoot for a million and go with the SBA.
The application is free. If we're going to apply, why not apply for all of it? It was the application, when it comes time to do the loan, we can do whatever we want.
I'm still afraid what's going to happen with that government. If they don't pass any budgeting November.
But that then will just be turned down, it won't affect us, so.
I mean, if we're talking over a long period of time.
I mean, if we're talking over a long period of time. I'd rather see some of the tax rate go up.
And then let us know within seven days.
So it's just an application, and then when we comes time to. Fill out the paperwork, we can change the amount.
Yes.
Alright.
And as I said, they're not gonna give us more than what FEMA has said. That we have into FEMA, so in other words. If we have one point five million into FEMA, that's what they would allow us up to. If it's two million, oh, then that's what they would allow us. They will go by FEMA's figures. But they will, we reply, but then I have to have all the paperwork in from start to finish within seven days and then they make their decision. So we would know by before the next meeting.
Okay.
The only other thing they might ask us for is some deeds, or the other thing. I'm like, how can I show them a deed of land?
Alright, let's move, are we ready to make a motion to uh go with SBA?
I'll make a motion to apply for the loan.
And the amount of?
Uh, whatever the FEMA funding is, the million and a half. Maximum amount that we're allowed to.
I'll second that.
It says SBA will not decline a loan through Black Black River, requires you to pledge what is available.
Anything else, any other discussion on this? All those in favor of um applying for a loan through the SBA, the maximum amount that we are allowed. By, by saying yes? Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. So Carrie.
You.
So we need to sign this um for her to. Have permission to do that. Thanks, Alex. So I like, I'll hear the one. I shouldn't have brought it up. In the uh. They emailed the um, the Vermont um legislature. Uh, has uh recognized that many of Vermont's small municipalities struggle with capacity, both bandwidth and expertise. Compas- capacity gaps create barriers to access. The unprecedented amount of federal. Funds currently available to help advance local projects in response to this. The Leg- Vermont Legislature appropriated three million dollars to create the municipal. Technical Assistance Program to serve those towns most in need. You receive this letter today because your town is on the pre-approved list for assistance. So what this means is um, they set it up so our regional planning commissions. Will be the um. Will off, will help us offer this free technical assistance to advance eligible local projects. So what we have to do in our meeting is um. Just make a motion indicating that we wanna participate. And then we reach out to our. Local planning commission and Alex actually that was here is the person they've. Designated to help us and they can help us with. Water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, housing, community. Recovery, climate change, community and economic development. Um, community assessments, opportunity assessments, funding application and. Permit assistance, project management and implementation. And capacity building activities. To me, it's a win-win, uh it's free. Planning Commission gets paid for through um. Legislature.
So you're looking for a motion to sign up for this program?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Probably have a motion to um. Agree to be part of the municipal technical assistance program, do I have a second?
I'll take that.
Should second that? Does anyone want any further information on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. So Carrie. It's town garage fire station repairs. So we received none. So we need to go to Plan B.
Else with matches? That's too wet, it would never burn. Enough control burns in my life.
So it seems like the biggest problem uh with contractors I've talked to is the deadline of um. November third because uh they are pretty much committed at this. Point um, with other people in their business. So what was Mr. Dunbar's uh timeframe, Kurt?
Um, I spoke to Brian. Uh, yesterday again, um. You know, I think this, this opportunity was presented to Brian by. Uh, the road crew themselves, so I was not involved from the beginning. Um, but his timeframe is to start immediately. Um, he does need to have the foam put in first. Uh, that's his greatest concern because he thinks we might have lost that opportunity, I'm not sure. Um, he would, he declined to bid. Um, he felt it was not a biddable project. Um, so he offered time and material. Uh, he offered uh the town to handle the material. Or he would be happy to handle the material as part of his project. His hourly rate is seventy dollars an hour. Um, and it would be a two-man team, so figure a hundred and forty bucks an hour. Um, and he thinks that phase one on this could be done in about. I, I, this, you really need to talk to him specifically, uh but ten days is what I heard. Um, and uh. So uh the phase one, as I understand it, is to get the foam in and then to do. Uh, I think Michael probably understands the process a lot better than I do. Um, but he did look at. The request and the requirements, um, he's certainly capable of doing it. So we're caught between hunting season and. Uh, we're, we're caught between right now and hunting season. Uh, is where we stand, so um, I might, so if he is our option, my recommendation would be for. Uh, you know, the designer, uh, Michael to get together with Brian, you know, like tomorrow. Um, and see if there is an opportunity there.
Now, uh. Was he willing to do the demo on the fire station side as well?
Yes, yep.
And he can start that immediately, that would give us lead time to get foam, to get Richard back in for foam, because Richard gave us a quote, right, All-American Foam?
Right, yeah, and Richard, apparently Richard's comment is, you know, when I give a quote, you do it now or you don't do it. So, so we're gonna have to reset with that, yeah.
Yeah.
So what is going right for carpenters these days, seventy dollars an hour?
That's a little higher than I am.
That's very high to me.
That's pretty high.
Very high.
Only, for me, it's only high by about five bucks an hour, but it depends on the project. Um, but I'm kind of irrelevant, I can't, I can't help the town. Uh, not by, so.
Guess the only question I have is. How much longer are we going to keep the building?
At least three years. We're not, we're not, we're getting rid of it tomorrow.
My concern is with the foam. The cost.
Well, it's the reason we picked foam was because it's waterproof.
And even if we don't use it as a town garage, the building, we're not gonna dynamite it, I assume we'll use it for something.
You could always use rock wall.
Could.
Which is waterproof. And if you decide to tear the building down, you could reuse it.
What was the, I don't have it in front of me, do we know what Richard's quote was?
Eight fifty for something, I don't know what it was for.
I think he was just.
Eight fifty was just for the garage, not for the fire department.
So even if we doubled that, I mean, sixteen hundred bucks. Uh, I just ordered two pallets of rock wool and you're not gonna touch it for that.
No.
It's, it's as expensive and there's the labor piece of it. Plus you've got a mask. Yeah. Yeah, my, my, I guess professional opinion would be we should foam at least that lower section. Uh, I do worry about how that transition from the foam to whatever insulation is above. But you know, that's, that's an interesting detail that whoever does that is gonna wanna pay close attention to how that's done.
They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to board it and.
I would, I would think we'd have to have blocking, at least.
Blocking in plastic or it's gonna spread.
But either way, um. I don't think seventy is unreasonable. It's, it's a little higher than I've charged, but what I've learned here is I'll just raise my rates.
And they don't wanna. Bring materials in, they don't wanna.
Well, we're taxing, we're tax exempt, so I would think that. I don't know who's gonna be in charge of procurement, um. If we're just gonna let them go charge on our accounts, I don't know how that does work.
Now, the way his proposal is to do it either way, the preferable way, at least in his mind. Is that he has accounts all over, all over. And uh determine what we need and make the purchase and bill us.
Yeah, so what, why did you say that he wanted the town to handle the materials? I don't understand what that means.
Didn't, I didn't say that, I said he, we have the, we have the option. He, he'll go either way, either we can handle the materials or he can handle the materials.
Oh, I misunderstood you.
Is there somebody that has the. Capability, has room on their plate to handle procurement? If he gave us a list of what we place the orders, I mean, if, if he does it. We're gonna be paying sales tax on it, and I'm assuming he would put a material markup on that. Uh, and I don't see any reason that we should have to pay that being they were tax exempt, he could set up a tax exempt job and the. Supply houses wouldn't charge him, but that's a complicated paperwork, man, that's.
Yeah, well, I think the answer to the question, given the timeframe and the urgency is no, we, we don't have that resource unless one of you can do it. Is he able to give us a list of his materials? I think the materials were outlined in the RFP, um.
Yeah, plywood, tin, somebody else is handling the foam.
I think if you wanna give me the information, I'll go and talk to two or three different. Suppliers. And I just need to get with Belinda to get the.
Yeah, the only thing I don't, the only thing I don't have is, is the quantities, I was relying on a contractor to. To write those up. He, he sounds like kind of a free agent anyway, I think if we do choose to go with Brian. I mean, he's unwilling to write a contract that stipulates and protects him from unforeseen circumstances, I assume he's gonna wanna just go to the store and do it his way. And we're gonna be left holding the bill for that.
I mean, if you want me to, I, I basically would take Monday off and just take that list of materials and go to Pohlins and, yeah. Two or three other. Country home garden, see what he can do. Plus I'd need the tax number, that's all.
This is a form that Belinda fills out for tax exemptions.
I would recommend talking directly to Brian. Uh, again, this was an R, I, I'm kinda. Yeah, I got all of this secondhand, so. I think there needs to be a direct conversation with him and you'll really, I think then the board can really understand. Um, but the urgency, the urgency remains.
If um, if you can forward me his contact info, I'll set something up, um. I have some time tomorrow evening and. And Friday evening, I'll try to get in touch with him.
It's just kinda hard to be dealing with or accepting a bid or hiring a contractor that. Has never even reached out to the select board, so it's kinda hard to make a decision this way.
The other alternative is the road crew can do it themselves, they don't wanna do it, they don't have the time to do it. But they did offer to do it themselves, it's gotten to that point where we can't even get a truck in there.
It's also not unreasonable to have them put things back where they go and whoever goes in there and has to do it. Has to move all the things, I mean, that's, again, that's a labor thing that we could save ourselves.
It could be, yep.
But I mean, tho- those guys can't be waiting on us or anybody else. So it's coming whether we're ready or not.
Right. Did you want me to uh? Again, I don't, in on this with you or just wait until?
Yeah, no, if you, if you've got some free time, I'd love to have you.
I mean, I can. Tomorrow night or Friday night, you just decide and we'll get together and talk with the guy and.
Yeah, well, let's reach out Monday off and. Reach out to him and see what he's got available. Um, because I mean, if we get the stuff ordered by Monday. Yeah, it's, there's nothing special order, it's all gonna be on a truck Tuesday morning, right?
Yeah, um, so one thing I do know about Brian is he's very responsive. To phone calls, you know, you, he will answer the phone, so, so I will send you the, his contact info, yeah.
And we will need a certificate of insurance and uh he'll have to fill out an S nine. Our auditors will require that.
And the last question I have is about the reimbursement for this. Being that he's T and M, are we gonna be able to just hand the insurance company a bill? Are they gonna accept that?
FEMA won't, but if, uh.
But is this?
It's not gonna be co- I don't know.
Well, but no, this damage isn't covered by VLCT and if FEMA won't accept time and materials. Then I say we can't. I mean, are we gonna pay for this out of pocket?
It'll be expensive. Well, the um. Yeah, it is, so no, the VLCT will not accept this because it's, again, it's uh. Mold related, so it would transfer to. FEMA, now I can ask FEMA, I can explain the situation to FEMA. And I can do that like right now. Um, and, and see if, how sticky they are about this time and material thing, I've seen them. Go the other way a few times, so. Uh, I can ask that question, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would be valuable to me anyway.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and, and when we talk to, to Brian. You know, I don't know if it's uh a discomfort with that kind of work or what, but maybe I can. Help him write a contract that covers his basis so that he's comfortable with it. Uh, I can give him some language that I would use.
Yeah, yeah.
And see if he'll submit a bid for us.
Good. Alright.
Is someone gonna follow up with Richard though, uh, too, I mean, now that we don't. We're not following this, we can hire someone else to just come in and do foam. Now, is Richard the only one around that can do? Home?
No. Um, I think Village Builders sold their equipment to an outfit in Danville that did my house. Um, at your own peril, we can reach out to them. Uh, I guess our own peril, on the, on the side of the desk.
Village Builders sold out?
As far as I understand, but I haven't talked to Fred lately, I'm not sure. Um, but there's Bugbee, they were willing to come out and do my house, they were reasonable and very professional. Uh, there's, there's a bunch of different people that can. Um.
There's one in Irisburg too, I know that.
Oh, uh, any, what is it, any K, any P, something like. Um. Yeah, there's a bunch of different places.
I mean, it's a pretty small job.
Yeah.
They could just be driving by.
Yeah.
Almost, to another job.
Yeah, the, the biggest thing is gonna be making sure that the. Yeah, the, the biggest thing is gonna be making sure that the demo is done.
Right.
You know, and depending on where we land with whether or not FEMA will reimburse us at time and materials or Brian will write a contract, submit a bid. Um, you know, we may not be we may not be not following. For RFP, we may end up having to amend some dates and
Right.
Reach back out to anybody that we've talked to. Uh, Belinda was saying earlier that there was two other members that were interested, two other contractors that were interested but just couldn't meet the deadline. It might be.
Well, I had one too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the deadline.
It might be worth reaching out to them and just seeing what their timeline is. If they're, if we're talking weeks, not months, that would be that would be done.
Excuse me? Ha- has, and has consideration been given to, um, the inhabitants of the garage and the fire department and the time it would take for the off-gassing of the spray foam?
I think generally it takes seventy-two hours for it, um, to be completely done. But with the spray foam that was in, uh, that was done in my house when Vermont Insulation Solutions did it, they asked for an eight hours. So if we were to do it in the afternoon, um, you know, following your, your hope, if somebody were driving by, they'd do it on their way home. Nobody's in the shop. I don't, I don't think that'll be a huge concern. It's not like we're gonna have to boot them for a week.
Well, I was in the school when, when they did the spray foam in the roof there and it was awful. Absolutely awful and it was, was for a couple of days at least.
Well, that'll be another thing we'll have to ask about that.
So Monica, Jim wouldn't be interested in applying?
Uh, he's been off on a fishing trip. Um, I don't think he's heard about it yet.
It was in the paper, but we're getting desperate.
I mean, if it was done on a Friday night, then hopefully no snow. It would be able to gone into by Monday morning.
They also have that, that giant exhaust fan. When I was in there with Chan, that, that was operational. So, I mean, again, if it did take a couple of days, we can flip that fan on overnight. It should mitigate any problems.
So he said no, Lin.
Okay. All right, so does everybody have their orders and what they're gonna do? And how are you gonna report back so we make a decision? Send out an email or something?
If that's acceptable.
Yeah. All right. Okay.
So who is gonna do foam? Or talk to a foam person?
I can reach out to, I can reach back out to Richard. Um, I can also call a couple other local guys.
Oh, we need the demolition done first. They're not gonna come and do the fires, the garage. Then demo the fire station and come back. It's gotta, we need demo done first.
Plus you need someone to go in and do the blocking.
Yeah, I would, I would consider that as a part of.
Part of the demo?
Yeah. Demo and insulation prep.
Right.
I think, I think the place to start is to try to meet with Brian and see how amenable he is to.
Okay, generator maintenance agreement, um, it's been, uh, the tradition, uh, for, since we received, um, forget this generator. Um, the town has out here to, uh, sign a preventative, well, we take out a prevent- preventative maintenance agreement every year. We can take it out, um, for a complete annual major, ma- major service, parts, labor and mileage included, Program One is, um, four, forty-eight, or if we pay by November first is four twenty-six. That's what we've ta- done in the past, that one. Program Two is two visits a year. Um, that's seven thirty-one or six ninety-four. If we pay by November first.
I would just stay with the option one.
So good for the board, we'll sign now, maybe for that one. Okay. Uh, last thing is the town hall heating. Lot of calls, a lot of complaints about it being cold, but finally, uh, the end of the story is they've moved up the installation to November seventh through tenth. It was gonna be sometime in December. They, um, brought two space heaters today. I'm not sure what they look like. They brought them after this meeting started to the town hall. The problem is that there's no electricity in the town hall, so they can't bring space heaters more than two. I have asked, um, Bob to have Gould's electrical come and put in a few more electric, uh, plugs. Uh, two in that whole hall is just not sufficient. I mean, put in a couple more anyway and we can maybe get a few more heaters, but that's been the holdup. They did install the water last week. I put this on the agenda because I hadn't, because, uh, I didn't know what to do. And I was just getting so many complaints, but I got it resolved.
Belinda, uh, just to comment on that, um, I contacted Borns for the fuel, propane fuel tanks.
Yeah.
We gotta do a couple of things there that I will take care of. Uh, we need to get some photographs. Um, but given the, uh, schedule, since they've moved the schedule up, Borns' preference is that, uh, they stub it out. And so Borns knows where the vents are, they know where the line is, and then they come in with their tanks. Um, now, they said we can do it the other way around. You can come in with your tanks, um, but, uh, they would prefer not to because they don't wanna be surprised.
Well, I don't know what any of that means, but I guess you'll have to just, Lloyd's and Borns will have to work together or something, um.
Yeah, I've both, I've been in touch with both of them and, uh, so the preferable way for both of them is for them to uh, do the work, uh, stub it out, so the vents are there, uh, the gas line is there. Borns comes in and hooks everything up.
So does that mean they come in, so I was told the November seventh through the tenth, um, the tenth is on a Friday. I assume they're done. Does that mean then now we have to wait till Monday for Borns to come back or would they come back like on that Friday? Um.
Yeah, I mean, they would, yeah, again, it's up to Borns' scheduling. It's up to Borns' scheduling and so, and a- as you all know, Borns is like way scheduled out. Um, but since they're selling propane, this is their, their business and their priority. Um, so I did not get a sense there's gonna be a big delay. We can mitigate the possibility of that delay by just, uh, having uh, the two firms get together and, uh, you know, sketch out where locations should be. And that way you can get, get ahead of it, order it from Borns and it comes in when it comes in, yeah.
Yeah, and, and Lloyd would be able to test fire the equipment if the tanks were on site. They wouldn't have to make another trip back.
That's correct, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would see if we can't get them to play nice together and at least have Lloyd's pick a corner for for the tanks to set and have Borns just come.
Well, I know, they know that when they were gonna do the high heaters, they, we knew where it was gonna go. I mean, we know where those tanks are going. They're going at the end of the handicap ramp. On the side that people aren't driving in, um, to hit. So that's where it's going and the furnaces are going up on the stage on the corner by the window. Um, so the line is gonna have to be, I don't know what the vent, the, the vents for the furnace.
They'll just go out the wall?
Yeah, in the back. And, um, doesn't the, um, Lloyd's, you said, was gonna run the line?
Yes.
So what does Borns have to do other than deliver two tanks with some gas in them?
They're just being, well.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to figure that out.
I suppose the break later on.
It sounds like you have it all laid out, which is great, um, but Borns is, I, I, you know, you asked me to get the.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking out loud. I'm not blaming you. I'm just ju- just trying to figure out a solution that they're both gonna be there at the same time and working together, that's all.
And say, you know, get together Lloyd's, just, and they're both, they're both very cooperative.
Yeah.
Back out where you want it and get it over here, get it done.
Great.
My only thing is, Kurt, make sure they have a main line shut off as well as shut offs to both heaters.
Okay.
Because if you don't have a main line shut off, you switch companies, you're gonna lose propane. But if they wanna work on one heater, we shut down the whole system, makes no sense.
Right.
So just make sure they're incorporating shut off.
Okay, okay. I will, I made a note of that, will do.
Okay. Then they're done this.
Anything else before the born? Motion to adjourn, Richard, at eight oh two?
I will make a move that we adjourn this meeting, so.
All in favor?
Any objection?
Yes. You can make it, but make it from your living room.
It's if I'm still there.